Speedy will now come to order. Juanita, can you call the roll?
Randy Brockway.
Here.
Lisa Gaynor.
Here.
David Kadama.
Here.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Michael O'Brien.
Here.
Arthur Perry.
Here.
Mary Rose Mangia.
Here. Let's all rise to the pleasure.
Pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now going to open our floor to public comments. Thank you for those who've signed in on the sign-in sheet. And the first would be Linda Murphy. And one of our visual, audiovisual people has a microphone for you. Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Linda.
I feel like I'm trying out for The Voice or something. Anyway, hi, I'm Linda Murphy. I live at 239 Long Island Road. And I just wanted to say a few brief comments to you guys tonight. First of all, thank you so much for all the time and dedication you guys put into this. I know that each one of you has a passion for serving our community and our school district, and it's completely appreciated. So please, whatever else I say, know that. I just wanted to speak a little bit. I'm the president of the PTO with Jessica Necras over at Central. I have two boys there. So I'm lucky enough to be involved in a lot of district-wide things. I get to meet with PLT, I get to meet with Mr. Gatz. I don't get to make it to a lot of these meetings for other reasons, but I do watch them on video, on YouTube. And I just wanted to mention a few things that I've been noticing and that I know a lot of the community has been noticing as well. You watch the meetings, and I just want to let you guys know it has a very disrespectful tone, you guys towards each other. A lot of the conversations don't seem to be pointed in the right directions, in my mind. Most importantly, I feel like there's a kind of a lack of trust and a slight disrespect from the board to the administration. And I know that we are coming off of year, a year of a lot of struggles where that may have been tested in the past, and I can appreciate that. But I just really, I'm here to urge you to kind of reset a lot of it. I just feel that we're all here because we care about the education of the students in our district. Whether you have a child or you don't have a child, we all know that a great school helps us all. So I would just urge you guys to reset the relationships a little bit and to start. I've had the pleasure to work with some of the administration, and I am very excited when I'm with them. I feel the energy and the enthusiasm that they have and the expertise that they bring that we don't have. And I just urge you guys maybe to just give a little more trust in that, and I know that's difficult. But I feel that it's necessary to move forward where we need to go. There's a lot of things going on, and I feel like the discussions aren't surrounding the most important things about education and curriculum and Common Core and things that are really truly important to the education of our children. So on that note, again, thank you guys so much for everything you do. As a volunteer myself, I know how taxing this can be on you and your own family. So thank you. But I just, in sum, I've had the pleasure to work with a lot of our administration. I'm very confident in them, and I'm excited to see what they're going to bring. And while change is hard, sometimes it's necessary, and I just hope we can move forward and you guys can kind of reset a new relationship with slight more respect and openness to the experts that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for your confidence in our administration and your thanks to the board. Thank you. Next, would this be Jessica Necras?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. The Silky Song stylings. This is really weird. Anyway, Jessica Necras, I live at 364 Robinson Court. To ditto Linda's comments, thank you. The tremendous amount of time and energy you guys dedicate to this is unbelievable, and it takes special people to do that. So further to go on, I just want to give my confidence to Dr. Sharmel Lewis, to the other administration that are here. I have had such wonderful experience with them. What they have to say is well reasoned, in my opinion. It makes a great deal of sense. It is not based on tradition or convenience, as those are not forbearers to change. The Common Core curriculum, I realize, is going to be turning life upside down because it is completely new. And related to that, I believe you guys received an email today from Aberdeen Osga, who is at 150 Nut All Road. And I'd like to read her email. She asked me to read it for her this evening. Dear ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I understand that alignment of our math and reading programs with Common Core is a process that takes time and study. I also understand that through no fault of this board or the current administration, the district is behind the state mandated implementation date in these areas. This puts our children at a competitive disadvantage on standardized tests, which concerns parents and property owners within the district alike. We know that Common Core is not a prepackaged worksheet program. We can just filter to students via our teachers. It's the education, largest education reform effort of the last decade. It's an opportunity to drive greater collaboration, critical thinking, close reading, and research skills, and interdisciplinary study. It is an opportunity because according to a report issued in September by the National School Boards Association, the success of Common Core is contingent upon effective teacher professional development. Common Core requires teaching techniques that are substantially different from current practice. It will not take time just to teach those techniques, but to give teachers a chance to practice, communicate, and practice some more in order to implement them effectively. The NSBA report, Teaching the Teachers: Effective Professional Development in an Era of High-Stakes Accountability, recommends, first, that professional development be ongoing and carried out over time rather than presented in one-day workshops. It should be delivered, second, it should be delivered in the context of the teacher's subject area, and, third, pure coaches and mentors are highly effective, in quotes, and should be used whenever possible. Regular planning and collaboration needs to be built into our teacher's schedules and enable proper implementation of Common Core. And case studies cited in the NSBA report suggest ways that districts may restructure spending to minimize attendant expense. We, as a district, are on the cusp of a great opportunity to energize our teachers, keep our students fully engaged and challenged, and hopefully lead to more creative solutions to real-life problems in the future. Supporting the effective professional development of our teachers is critical to the successful implementation of Common Core, and this board has my full support in these efforts. Sincerely, Aberdeen Osga.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica. And next, Michelle Backus.
My name is Michelle Backus. I live at 472 Shenstone Riverside. I have a fifth grader at Blythe. He'll be coming to Hauser next year. And I just wanted to quickly express some concerns about the accessibility of the building. While I realize there's wheelchair lifts that are installed throughout the building, our son's physical disability doesn't limit him or confine him to a wheelchair. He is mobile. He has fixed ankle joints and wears AFOs. And we're concerned about the stairs, quite honestly. I think someone brought up last month, there's even stairs going down to the nurse's office. So accommodations will be made. That's part of the IEP, and we'll work with the district as we always have, and it's been a good cooperation so far. I just wanted to just point that out. I wish I'd been more aware that this was how the building was set up years ago when you guys were, or the board was considering construction at that time, because I think they possibly missed something with an elevator being installed. Just having a wheelchair lift doesn't help kids that aren't in a wheelchair. So that's really my only concern at this point. I just wanted to show a little bit of support in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And next, Jelsey.
Hi, a quick question. Jelsey Tukalik, 155 Aitkinside Road. I was wondering how the hiring of the new special ed director is coming, status on that?
I'm not able to comment on this time, and that's public comment, so I'm not going to be able to comment on that.
Could we, I think it is part of our policy that we, I'm sorry, Jelsey, we'll get you an answer for that.
Okay. So who will, will you email me then, or can you do that?
Sure. Yeah, I can email you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Sharmel Lewis will update us on FOIA requests and FOIA responses.
In your packet, you have three FOIA requests. One from Mr. Scholnick regarding two separation agreements of employees, one from the Merit Credit Bureau requesting information about one of our contractors, and third, from Lee's Food Service, looking at our equipment and asking for contracts on those. And all three responses are also in your packet.
Thank you. Next, we do not have any announcements this evening, nor do we have any presentations from the floor. So our next item of business would be minutes, approval of minutes of previous meeting, of previous meetings. And I will make a motion, or ask that a motion be made, that the Board of Education accept the meeting minutes of the public hearing, ISBE holiday waiver, and regular business meeting, January 21st, 2014. Our special meeting with the Technology Forum on February 4th, our education committee meeting, February 11th, our policy committee meeting of February 18th, our regular business meeting, February 18th, and our closed session meeting, February 18th. Juanita has provided some minor corrections, which you've all been given today from what was posted on the, from what was previously posted in Board Book. And I just also want to mention that the first one, the ISBE holiday waiver and regular business meeting are corrected from what was presented last month. So may I have a motion to approve these meetings, or minutes?
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended with, right.
Randy Brockway.
Here. Yes.
Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mangia.
Aye. Well, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Next, financial items. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't send it this, sorry.
It's okay.
Thanks for letting me know.
You could skip it if you want.
No, we definitely want to hear from you.
Okay. Our three guiding principles are academic and professional excellence, financial and operational excellence, and rigorous communications. So addressing the first area of academic and professional excellence, we have our art show, which will be held next, excuse me, two weeks on April 1st. It's going to be fifth graders at Blythe and Ames, created an art, a short video for you, sharing that, because we know we have an education committee that night. And there is also a personal invitation at your desks today. Mrs. Klausa is in charge of that, and she's looking forward to sharing the progress of her fifth graders at both schools. Five Essentials. Five Essentials is the survey that's created for the state from the University of Chicago. Its first year of inception was last year. This year, it will, it has opened on March 17th. So as a district leadership team, we decided to administer to all staff the week of April 7th through the 10th. And then all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will be taking it during advisory the following week, which is April 14th through the 21st. And we will also then have a link available on each of our school and district website for parents. The results will be made available to myself and to principals in June, and then they will be posted publicly in the state report card in October. And if you recall, last year, just some of the schools participated in that, and some of the parents were given the option to do it, as well as staff. But this year, we will be making it district-wide for staff, students in sixth through eighth, and also available to parents.
Sorry. Do you know if there have been substantive changes to the process or the survey itself? Because I know there was some controversy or discussion back and forth about its various, you know, the merits, what did it show, how was it reflecting the districts and different schools and things like that?
Yes. They, both, the process and the results have been changed, or the reporting of the results. I don't know what they are specifically, but they did look at it statewide level. The Action Learning System Conference, Dr. Gannon presented at a national conference in California of how Riverside District 96 is planning for the implementation of Common Core in Illinois. We were selected on that because we are piloting the sync solution. He and Mr. Gatz, who represented the district leadership team, visited schools near San Diego that is also nationally recognized for its successful implementation of the Common Core. They looked at successful instructional strategies, what are some interventions and curriculum programs that schools are using, how they're using them, and how they're helping kids to grow. This conference was an all-expense paid, excluding airfare, was paid for by Action Learning System because of our participation with their professional development. And we were lucky to have our district represented at the forefront of this opportunity. And Mr. Gatz and Dr. Gannon did share with the DLT what they learned and how we are going to move forward, and we'll be sharing our professional development plan with you at the, or the options with you at the April 1st education committee meeting. Kindergarten Information Night was held on March 6th. Principals presented an overview of kindergarten, the program, and the registration process to incoming families. And as you can see below, included in your packets are the totals. We had 117 students this year that are registered compared to last year. We were at about 102 at the same time. District 96 staff members presented at the ICE, which is the Illinois Computing Educators Conference, in early March. And the topics of their presentations were making global connections work and growing learning communities within your classroom. In addition, the technology staff also completed and submitted the technology plan to the Illinois State Board of Education, and this will allow us to request grant dollars for instructional technology resources and materials going forward as they become available. The Hauser Chamber Choir performed for our senior citizens at the Village of North Riverside last week, and I believe I shared a picture of that with you. It was fantastic performers, and the seniors enjoyed their entertainment immensely. And it was a great opportunity for our community to partner elderly with our youth. District-wide school supply list, Mr. Guerman, Ms. Keller, and myself held a meeting last week with all K-5 staff, different teachers per grade level, and agreed upon a consistent district grade level list, kindergarten first through fifth. In addition to that, we are going to be aligned with RB High School in their executive functioning system for folders. So for example, red would be for reading, blue would be for math, purple would be for language arts. The colors have been established, and we're going to be taking those through all the way from third through high school. Curriculum committee updates, the math Common Core team is in the beginning stage of aligning their curriculum to the math Common Core standards, and Dr. Gannon met with individual math teachers at grade levels to start their curriculum aligning process. He also met with the 21T Cube team for the initial stages of incorporating 21st century standards into our English Language Arts curriculum. Financial and operational excellence, the, as you can see, Mr. Zay had put together a brief report of some of the bathroom flooding that was happening at Hollywood and how they've addressed that, also the roof repair at, I believe it was, I'm sorry, I don't have the location. Central?
Central.
Central, thank you, Zach. And then he is beginning the traffic study with Riverside, with the traffic study for the handicap drop-off zone with the village manager and the police. And they're going to be getting data collection this week and really looking at drop-off, pickup, and pedestrian crossings. And they should have a final report in early May shared with you. Technology infrastructure, with the help of Net56, who's our current techno, excuse me, temporary solution, we have identified 13 phones and 221 lines that were disconnected because they weren't being used. And so we're starting to see a monthly cost savings on that bill. Security cameras, we'll be discussing this in the new business portion of the meeting, but we did receive two estimates from ITR and Interstate Electric, and then we'll have that discussion of how we want to proceed with those. And Mr. Zay had also met with the district leadership team to start working with principals on the fiscal year 15 budget process, shared with them dates and the new procedures they'll be following for capital as well as uncapitalized equipment. The calendar and PD surveys for rigorous communication, the results have been shared with you. That was sent out two weeks ago, sharing with them the 1415 current calendar as well as option AB for the amended calendar for the use of emergency days, and then also getting parent feedback on proposed early start or a late, excuse me, a proposed late start or early release. So we'll be sharing those options with you on April 1st and the results of those parents' surveys. Special Ed Parent Night, on Monday, March 10th, Mrs. King presented information to families about students who are on IEP and what are the process and resources available to them. She partnered with some of our RAIN parents, who also shared some resources that are available to us locally, as well as the legal procedures that are required within IEP. Sped articulation, the IEP teams at each school began the fifth-grade transition planning to Hauser. In addition, they also started the meetings with eighth graders going to the RB High School. Ms. Folon has also established a network of social worker and psychologist meetings on a regular basis, as she does with the resource teachers, and it's a great way to just increase consistency and collaboration throughout the district and our special ed department. And that's all I have.
The Action Learning Systems Conference, Dr. Gannon.
Give us just kind of, just high, real high, high-level, what you observed at the school that you visited. Like, what did you see? Did you see, did you actually see evidence of the Common Core standards that kind of sets itself apart from, I guess, the traditional, the older methods of teaching?
Sure. One of the most unique things that this school is doing is, I guess, first and foremost, there's student ownership in the standards. It doesn't matter what grade level you go into.
Stand up.
Stand up.
So it doesn't matter what grade level you go into. The kids have ownership of the standards. The kids know exactly what standard they're working on. The kids know exactly where they're going as far as mastery and the roadmap to get there. So, and when you go from classroom to classroom, and I know Mr. Gatz was with me as well, when you go to classroom to classroom in this school, not only did the students know exactly where they are and where they're going, all of the supports, like the support staff, every morning they went into the professional development room, they had short collaboration time, but all the resources that they were using for the day, assessments and everything, were clipped up on data tables, and every teacher took it. So every teacher knew exactly what each grade level was doing. So curriculum was extremely, extremely well-aligned. As far as the instructional piece, the instruction was extremely consistent, in a sense where the teacher models first. Okay, so the kids know the standard, the kids know what the expectation is, now they're getting there. Everything is modeled first, it's an "I do." Then it's a "we do together" model, and then it's "you do," and I listen, as a teacher. So it's very structured, but there's a mastery expectation at the end of each activity. And the students, because the paces of the class is consistent, and the kids are able to expect kind of how the teaching is going, they can anticipate, the engagement in the classrooms is, I've seen it before on other trips that I spoke at, but this type of instruction, the engagement in the classroom is at an extremely, extremely high level for all kids. The other part, too, that I'll share real quick, is the way that this school designed all their support systems is, so students who might not be ready to master that standard at grade level right now, the standards are staircase close enough where they're working on similar skills, but it might be at a different quote "level" at that time. But the way that that's set up is, the students, so let's just say it's for math, okay? The students would work in smaller groups to get front-loaded with the skills and the information they need to be successful that same day in the classroom. So they're not pulled out of the tier-one classroom. They're front-loaded with the resources and information they need. They go into the classroom. When you're in that classroom, you cannot tell which of those kids just had the pre-teaching, because they're, they're on. And again, the teaching is similar, so they know what to expect. And that changes every week, because they have assessment systems built in with student databases where every Friday, the students get an assessment. It's not a huge assessment, but it's extremely, it's a standard, Common Core standards-based, tax-independent assessment, where they get it every Friday, they get the results right away, because it's computer-based. On Monday, those kids are regrouped based on skill, and that goes across all levels. So it's a very, it's fluid, it moves, but it's very fluid, and the instruction is tied to where that student is within that standard at that time. The same thing goes for gifted education. Those students are, what they're working on, they're in the tier-one classroom as well, and then when they get their extensions, they're working on that same standard. But they're working on the standard at a different understanding or a different level of that standard, per se. Because too often, I think, in some of our, even gifted education, is we kind of say, oh, the kids, you know, the students mastered that standard, let's move on. There, the standards are complex, and there are many, there are high levels of understanding that you can have within each standard, and we need to make sure that we are getting our students to that level. So everything is aligned. And the only, I was walking through with Becky from Action Learning Systems, and the only comment she had that wasn't extremely positive was, we were in one, they had one classroom that followed more of a self-contained model. And when we were talking, she was saying, this is the one class. And these students had severe learning challenges, so they were, you know, multiple grade levels below in achievement right now. But that school right now is at the point where they're working on, they're really focusing on how do we get these students to master these standards and build a sequential, build a sequential system that allows them to do that, as opposed to it being a completely different educational experience for those kids. So that was a really long answer, but, sorry. But it's, I think you can tell how I feel about it, but it's really, really, there's really some really great teaching and learning going on. Did I get everything, Pete?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry for that long-winded.
I just wanted to ask about the technology staff submitted a technology plan to ISBE. Is that something that you could share with the board? Is there?
I can share you a copy of it, yes. I don't have it with me. But yes, it was Matt, Alanius, Liz Whaley, and Paul Latuzyak not created that. And it's a state-required form, if you want to get any type of grant funding. I can share that with you.
The bathroom flooding at Hollywood, have you ever had that issue before?
No.
Is anyone?
No. No. I think it may be a flow issue. We contacted the architects to see when they did the construction of the building, if they considered, because they added a drain, if they considered a flow issue in their plans. So we sent out an email to the architect to see what their response was, and we're waiting for a response.
Okay.
On the five essentials survey, can students in K through 5 answer to, or no?
No.
It's just a middle, six through 12.
Six through 12.
Okay. I couldn't remember from last year.
Can I answer real quick on that survey? When we send that out to parents, we need 30% participation in order to get any results at all. So I hope you don't find us annoying if we keep sending you reminders, but your feedback is so important in this process, and if we get 29%, it'll turn out as if we've gotten no feedback at all. So if we're not at that 30%, we're probably going to be pushing pretty hard.
Brian, when do they go out?
We have them, I mean, it's open live now. Matt and I were, I don't want to say playing with it today, but we were kind of taking a look at it, making sure everything worked and it looked good. But I think the week for parents, I think, was the 11th, April 11th?
No, we have down.
Is that in here?
No.
14.
14 through the 21st for parents, and the 7th through 10th for staff. And we're going to do the same week for parents and teach, excuse me, parents and students the same week, and teachers will be the week before.
And it closes the 25th officially, so after that, okay.
Okay, well, hope you get, we get 30%, please. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next, our item is. is our, oh, do you want to talk at all about the kindergarten registrations?
I just include them in for your review, and I think during the policy committee, our principals kind of gave a quick overview, but it seems to be pretty similar.
All right. All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is our reports from the school board committees. But what I want to ask is, given, basically ask the board if we're using this time productively to report for the committee since most of us go through all of the, all of them. In other words, we are all sitting in these committee meetings so we know what happened, and I'm just wondering, do we need to do these reports? And I think, Val, we were talking, and you had a suggestion about maybe doing a weekly update, or an update after, like you do.
Not weekly, but after each.
Yeah, after, yes.
After each committee meeting, doing a similar update that we do with the board, just doing a committee update and putting that out after each committee meeting for the public.
Yeah, and our.
That's a great idea.
Our minutes?
And our min.
And our minutes.
And our minutes.
And our minutes. So like, we do that board update after each meeting?
So my monthly minutes and my month, my monthly, weekly updates.
You wouldn't have to do that, that would be just something that we.
What do you mean of the minutes of the meeting? Those have to be approved, and that takes a month's lag.
Well, for me, it's, it's every month. So, I mean.
So we would do, we would create that for you. It would come from the district office, a policy committee update.
Okay.
And it would just go out to parents via email, but that would not substitute the policy committee minutes, because those are official and they would be released as they are normally.
Because mine are kind of detailed.
Right. And we would do the same, yeah, this would just be an overview. Like, today, we discussed the policies, first readings, and we would list the policies, and then new bus, or new policies for discussion. Could have been the hiring policy, could have been the superintendent's spending policy, could be administrative review for my ISB, and we would just give a brief, one-sentence statement of what we were talking about.
Similar to the updates that go up at the regular VLE meeting, probably the same format and everything?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I would just offer that since the meet, our main meeting is filmed, and there are a number of people that are watching us, whether it's maybe not tonight, but in the weeks ahead, I've had a number of people comment that they do watch the meetings. So without a verbal committee report, some of those residents would not be able to get a understanding of what's going on in the committees.
Another idea is, can we use, all right, thank you. I was wondering if another idea of how to use this time might be to maybe have the, the board weigh in at this time as what they might want future meetings, committee, committee meetings to cover. Would that be also a good use of this time?
I don't quite follow you, which.
Well, again, if you have topics that you might want a future committee to cover, or maybe this would be a time to, again, just briefly say, I'm just throwing ideas out there.
Sure.
I think that's happened in the past, just informally.
When the, I, I would expect that in the next couple of days or by the end of the week, a email that I'll get highlighting the board's, board meeting comes out, correct? Don't all members of the community get that, or is it just the school community?
School community, probably.
Yeah, because we don't can't capture those meetings. Takes, I, I, I like some kind of format where we're trying to shorten the meeting the better, because I think people show up at the school board meeting and they have to wade through all this, I, I think, mere procedures, and they want to hear the, you know, I guess, the new business items and things that we're voting on. I mean, that's where I think people wait around, and it's, you know, I'm disappointed at 10:30 when we finally get around the new business, people have left, which I completely understand, because I'm, I'm right there with them. But I guess anything to shorten the, the, the meeting, I fully support.
Do we want to just take a poll around the table of whether, you know, how you feel about continuing committee reports during this section?
Sure. I like sending it out, like we do at the board meeting, board meetings.
I would like to continue them and have them filmed.
Okay. Art?
I, I actually agree with Randy that it's good to have that opportunity to share that. I don't think, I think we could probably keep them a little more brief than maybe, you know, expounding on everything that was discussed. But I also like the idea of the, the sending out of the notice as well, so.
Okay. Rachel?
I kind of think I'd like to get to a point now that we've been televising the board meetings, I think we should televise the committee meetings, and if we get to that point, maybe as soon as April, maybe we don't have to go through these policy reports.
I, I think that's a good idea, too.
Then we, and we still get the reviews.
You don't like that policy report?
She might have no kind of reports.
I think some.
It's just talking about it so many times, maybe.
I guess I, I agree with Randy. I think a top line, if we're not recording, if we're not going to record the committee meetings, is important for the audience, the benefit of the audience, but I think it should be just that, a top line. And I also like the idea of sending them out. So I guess I'm a little bit of both.
All right, David.
That's cool.
That is cool.
Think we should talk about what we're going to talk about, think we should talk about it, and then we should talk about what we talked about.
And then write about it and email it.
And then write about it and email it and put it out on the internet, YouTube.
Well, I think the weekly updates are kind of excessive, but, yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we will do committee reports for a while longer. Okay, first committee to report would be the education committee.
You'll be glad to know that there was no education committee meeting since the last general board meeting, so I have nothing to report. But as you see down below, we will have an education committee meeting on April 1st, Tuesday.
Thank you for your very top-line report. Finance committee?
The finance committee met 3-4, and the items that we discussed were the 2014-15 budget process, a three-year comparison of revenues and expenditures, professional development and consultant costs, the creation of some management reports, and the discussion of draft seven of the 2014-15 calendar meeting. And the next meeting is May 6th at 7 o'clock.
All right, David, policy.
Policy, policy committee met earlier today, this evening, and we are, the committee is moving to this regular business meeting, two policies for final adoption, one on drug and alcohol-free workplace and tobacco prohibition, and another one on staff development program. We conducted a first reading of three other policies, ones related to board member code of conduct, abused and neglected child reporting, and ethics and conduct. We heard a presentation and recommendation for changes to our staff assignment and intra-district transfer policy that is going to be tabled for much, and to be included in a broader discussion at our education.
Sorry, you said staff, but you mean student, right?
Student, sorry, student assignment, student assignment and intra-district transfer policy. So that's going to be a part of the April 1st education committee meeting. We had some, we had discussion on policy 530 on hiring process and criteria, and that policy is going to be, is being drafted up with our board attorney. We had discussions on superintendent spending limits, as well as discussion about purchasing the ISB's administrative procedures, and that's my report.
All right, thank you. And Rachel, working committee procedures, just want to.
David touched on it. We did start talking about it tonight, and it's going to be brought back next meeting, revised by the attorney to merge the two hiring committee policies together, the proposed addition and the former policy. That's it.
All right. Any word from board liaisons?
No, not from ISB.
From PLT, we had a meeting on 2/26. Some topics we discussed there was a continued discussion and collection of feedback on the calendar, the promotion of the kindergarten registration night, possible collaboration of all the PTAs and PTOs using the same school supply vendor across the district now that we're having a, the same list. And then we had some conversation about how to, ways to continue to drive rigorous communication throughout the community. And our next meeting is tomorrow at 10:30.
What's the next step on the school supply?
It's, it was just brought to the table. There isn't really been, it was a concept that was floated. So I think they're going back to see if it's going to be an idea that they can, we can all work on.
Oh, and ISB, everyone got to notice that Jeff Cohen is no longer with the ISB?
I did. Something else left there, too. It's like, is the office empty except for the, what it seemed to be, but, all right, thank you. All right, next report from the Riverside Education Council.
Got the microphone?
I'm Patricia Gill, president of the Riverside Education Council. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Manja and Mr. Kadama for attending the REC Administration Board Member Meeting on March 6th. The REC felt we had great dialogue and discussion regarding the Professional Development Committee work and calendar. We realize these meetings are a wonderful opportunity to informally discuss the issues in the district with board members and administration. With that in mind, the REC would like to invite all the board members to our next REC Administration Board Member Meeting on Thursday, April 3rd at 3:45. We would like us to continue to dialogue and work together in doing what is best for our students in the district. I realize you have many meetings to attend, but we do open this invitation to you, and if you would like to join us, please let Dr. Sharmel Lewis know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is any kind of, or our financial information items, which, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to mention a couple of things regarding, just to inform you of what you're getting every month. Thank you. This treasury report, and the purpose of the treasurer's report is really to reconcile what our records have, our accounting records have, with the treasurer's office, making sure that what they say we have in the bank is what we, what we essentially do have in the bank. So that's what the first two pages are. And as you can see, on the bottom line, there's no difference between what the bank has and what the, what we're recording in our system. And then the third page is a high-level review of all our funds, and it's budget to actual compared with 14, 13 and 14. And then as we agreed to do quarterly reports in detail and explain the fluctuations, it'll be presented the same way as it was presented last month, where we show year-to-date for '12, '13, and '14. And then at that point, I'll explain fluctuations in revenues and expenditures.
Why we didn't put the anticipated?
Yes, and the reason why you did not receive a current and anticipated expenditure list, it would have been a repeat of what I've been doing in the past. For example, precision controls is something we talked about, that's the drip pans. We actually finally received the invoice, but I had mentioned to, to you guys as an anticipated expenditure that it was coming up. As far as anticipated expenditures going forward, I haven't, we have some things out there, but I haven't received any quotes or estimates that it can give solid numbers. So, and that probably won't happen until May, so it won't happen in April. So that's why you did not receive one.
Yeah, and we have not received the estimate for that. What they did was, they fastened
down, this is sheet metal, they fastened down the sheet metal for the, because it blew off during, not completely, but it, it opened up during that windstorm. But there's other damage around there that they couldn't get to because, obviously, the snow, they couldn't climb on the roof and so forth, so we had to wait for that. So those will be, you'll see those in, in next month.
Any other damage as a result of the roof not being?
A couple of gutters that came out, but.
No water as a result of melt off into the building at all?
No, not from that, no.
That's all I have. I guess I just have a question. You said the treasurer's report was two pages?
The first page.
The treasurer's report in the front panel?
Shows the balances of, of the accounts at the treasurer's office.
Right.
That's this page? You have that page?
Yeah, at that page.
That's the first attached.
Right. And then the page behind it, these are our assets, liabilities that tie to what the treasurer has.
Is that the one that says February pre-audit?
Yes.
Okay. And then, there used to be a time when we'd get those, all those big, long...
Are you talking about the payable list? Or the financial statements where it comes to the treasurer's office?
I think the financial statement, because we have the payable list.
Right. I, I thought there was some talk that that wasn't helpful, so I did a condensed, condensed version.
I don't know, I prefer to, I'd like to continue to see them if you don't mind. I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I had brought that up, whether or not people are actually reviewing. I, I do go through it, so, so I think we should.
But I like the summary, too.
I do, yeah.
That's just a report from the township. It's not.
As usual, we want both.
It's not additional work. It's just a report you hang, right?
It's a report I take from the treasurer and condense it into here, into my spreadsheet.
No, yeah, but the other one that's directly from the treasurer's office is just a report you hang, right?
Exactly.
So it's not, I mean, you can hang it and do your summary and your.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's not anything you're creating, it's just, they have to take that step of posting it.
Just post it, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
It does have all the breakdown of the objects and sub-accounts and stuff, which did come up a couple of times when people had questions.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna have it memorized someday, and I'll just know everything in them. All right, the next would be our financial action items, and the motion would be that the board approves the payable list of general invoices, Schedule A743 as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Juanita, can you take the role?
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye. All right. So our payables have been approved, as, thank you. Our next item is just a motion for the appointment, appointment, well, actually, a motion to approve to hire frantic Radelay to provide legal services for the school district to address TRS and contract matters for the district and other, and other matters as assigned by the board. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Juanita?
Excuse me, Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye. We've approved the hiring of frantic Radelay to address TRS and contract matters for our school district. Next, board policies for final adaption as a result of today's policy committee meeting. And, let's see here, we have that.
Do you want me to give you that motion?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I know, we're not doing all of them.
Right. So I, I make a motion to, to approve the following policies as, as presented to the board for, for adoption. This would be policy 550 on drug and alcohol-free workplace tobacco prohibition, and policy 5:100 on staff development program.
All right. All right, Juanita.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye. Next, presentation of the 2013-2014 district school calendar. We have, we have two options, A and B. I guess.
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve option A.
One, which is the, the administration rec.
A, we recommend A.
All right, recommend A. And then I think I only had one question on it, is, maybe I missed it, but which day is graduation?
June 10.
11.
June 11.
It is 11, I'm sorry.
Wednesday.
I need a second.
Wednesday, June 11.
So we can have some discussion.
I'll second David's motion.
All right.
And that motion is keeping April 20?
8th as an institute day.
As an institute day.
And the reason that we would like option A, just for the purpose of the audience, is we had four emergency days, January 6th and 7th, and then also January 27th and 28th, so we have to make up those four student attendance days. So the options that the board is considering is coming to school on April 28th, using that as one of our institute days, and then using June 6th, 9th and 10th as student attendance days. And then graduation would be June 11th, and then last day of staff would be 11th. What the staff and administration would like to use is option A, continue as is, keeping institute day as April 28th for staff development purposes. It's more relevant to have staff development on institute day while we're still in school so we can practice what we're using with Common Core and have some of our teachers who are participating in those trainings share out with their colleagues, as well as doing some crisis drill management for school safety and security. And we talked about that a little bit in the policy committee. So then, we would go to school on the 28th and then have, excuse me, students would be off on the 28th, and then we'd go to school on the 6th, 9th, 10th and 11th. So last day for staff and students would be the 11th, and graduation would also be on the 11th.
All right, is there any further discussion? Monita want to call the roll on option A?
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye. Option A has passed. Thank you. Now, we will turn our attention to the, next year's calendar. We have three drafts, draft six, seven or eight. And I am, I guess, may I have a motion to?
I move that the board approve official 2014-15 school calendar draft eight for Riverside School District.
Second.
As presented.
Second.
All right. Bob, do you find updating on, on your recommendation and also the reasons why you prefer one over another?
Sure, we came to you with draft six in January, and then based on feedback, you would ask us to eliminate some of the half-days, or all of the half-days. So we came back with draft seven in February, and then some feedback was to start two days later. So that's where draft eight is coming in, so we put a survey out to parents, as well as to staff, and we received 332 responses. And there was a very close tie between draft seven, which started on, school would be on Monday, August 25th, compared to draft eight, which started two days later, which was Wednesday, August 27th. So it was 40% of parents preferred draft seven, starting on that Monday, and forty, almost 42.5% preferred starting two days later, and then also getting out two days later. When we polled the staff, we shared the feedback, and it was unanimous with all schools that draft eight, which was starting on that Wednesday, the 27th, was the best model. Either one is fine for us, as long as we get our institute days, which are captured in that. We do understand the reasons that draft six did not pass because of, or, excuse me, was asked to be reconsidered because of the half-days, but we do like that professional development time, and we also like the time that we can share with District 94, 95 and 208. We're not able to do that as much in draft eight, but we're willing to take the benefits of the full five-day weeks.
You believe between draft seven and eight, or is draft eight more restrictive then?
Draft eight does not give us a full week of school until the third week. So we start out with a three-day week for kids, and then we go to a four-day week for kids, and then we start that third week with a five-day week. Draft seven starts out with a full five-day week for kids.
Why, can you give me the whys, the, the staff was in favor of eight versus seven in the, in the, is it better for kids in their mind, is it?
No, I, you know, honestly, no. I mean, I think they came with rationale for both, and then we just went back and polled them. We, for those, they liked the five-day week of draft seven. We felt that that was more continuity, starting routines and procedures in the beginning of school. But then when we went back and asked them, they didn't mind starting later. They also liked when we initially asked them, starting on that Thursday, Friday before school started, which I believe was the 21st and 22nd of August, they would have their two institute days, and then kids would come back on Monday, the 25th, having that weekend to maybe even prepare their classrooms or work in their classrooms. They did like that piece of it, too.
Do both? I think you said both draft seventh and eighth give you the same amount of professional development time, so.
And no half-days.
All right, so it's, so the recommendation, though, from administration and staff is, it's either, or? Are you leaning?
Eight based on feedback, eight based on feedback, but if you really look at.
From staff or from the community?
Both.
Both, okay.
Staff and community have shared eight, starting on that Wednesday for students. But I think if you're looking for a five-day week, the most five-day weeks are draft seven.
I mean, ideally, I would like, I think it's good to start the first week as a three, three, three-day, but I don't, I, I don't like really a, a three-day and then jumping into a, you know, a three-day weekend, a long weekend, and then coming back. That doesn't seem to make sense to me. It seemed to make more sense in, I think, draft six, when we started the week earlier, three days, five days, and then shorten the next week a four-day week. That seemed to make sense to me, but we got rid of that. I'm, I'm more comfortable, I'll go with the recommendation from, from administration, administration staff.
You mentioned that seven gave, gave us more five-day weeks?
Gave us that one additional.
Just one additional. Okay.
Sorry, what's the motion?
So the motion is eight.
Motion is eight. So does anybody want to, just want to vote it, on it, or amend it?
We got to vote it.
All right, Monita, call the roll.
Randy Brockway.
No.
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
No. But it looks like we've just passed.
Yeah.
Option eight. So I guess we can move on. Next is the approval of E-Rate. And Bob, if you don't mind, if you could prevent, present the reasons for the details on what E-Rate is?
Sure. District 96 receives E-Rate funding from the FCC to support basic telecommunications, internet access and wide area network, or WAN expenditures. So for projects taking place during the next fiscal year, so anytime after July 1st, contracts must be approved and signed by either myself or Mr. Zayed, or received by the 20th of March, in order for us to file with E-Rate on or before March 26th. So in order, we are going to receive all the bids for, we're looking to do our, our wiring and increase our bandwidth from 100 megabytes to 1 gig in all district buildings. We haven't received all those bids back. The due date is tomorrow, March 20th at noon. So once we receive all those bids, we'll combine them, I mean, we'll compile them, and then we'll pick the least expensive one and submit it to E-Rate by the 26th, but we need your action to do that, or basically your approval to do that, so pending board approval.
Well, what are we talking on, in like dollar amount? I mean, I mean, what's the, I know you haven't received the bids, but, I mean, are we talking, you know, six figures, or?
Zach, could you be?
The only thing I will say, because I can't say any other information because the bids aren't all in, they calculate it on a monthly, or they do the estimate on a monthly basis. So it's, some build in the cost of the construction into the monthly charge.
Okay, because I'm just concerned about the budget impact, that, you know, I mean, this, we're just approving that we're going to file for the E-Rate. I mean, when we receive it, I mean, are we, are we committing to anything right now?
The contract's going to read either contingent on actually receiving the E-Rate for that installation, and board approval.
Okay.
Have we done E-Rate in the past, or is this the first?
Oh, yes.
So this is a normal procedure we go through?
Bob, can you tell us maybe what some of the figures were in the past, you know, round number?
Well, we haven't done, we haven't done WAN in the past. It's usually just the phone lines, and it's a small.
It's a what?
The phone lines, our phone lines.
Ah, so this is more?
It's a new project.
The phone lines are 50, whatever, mega, mega internet that we're having, that was so small.
Is there a cap to the amount that we could potentially get?
Yes, you can get up to 90%, but our, it's based on our free and reduced, and we're at the 40%.
No, I, I mean, a hard cap, not a percent. Like, we get, we can get reimbursed 40% of the expense of the project up to a million dollars?
No, it's a percentage. There's no, not that I'm aware of, there's no cap.
Okay.
So for example, and just to review, since we do get 40% refund, so if a project costs $100,000, E-Rate would fund 40,000 of it, but we would still need your approval to do the other 60.
Okay.
That's apart from what we're approving now, which is?
You're approving us to submit the project to E-Rate once we get the bids.
Okay. I'm, I'm for that.
Now, in the, in the motion, it talks about proposed changes. Is there actual proposed change, or are we just accepting that, what, exactly what Bob just stated, that we're just submitting for approval, we're just, we're approving filing with E-Rate?
Right.
That's all, right? There's no proposed change, other, beyond that?
Well, you need.
No, I'm just wondering, the language in the, in the motion is, talks about some proposed change, so I just want to.
We're basi, you're basically approving that you're allowing administration to sign a contract and submit the 471 before March 26th, in order to qualify or rebate the E-Rate one, and, and then it's contingent on board approval of, once we.
The bid.
Bring the bids together. And it's not only the lowest, lowest bid is not only the only factor, we will do reference checks to it.
Okay.
All right, so I guess I'm going to ask again what the motion would be. We're, we're, the board is, is going to approve a motion for you to sign a contract and submit, what's the word?
471.
The form.
Form 471.
For E-Rate.
Based on bids?
Contingent to.
Contingent?
Something like that.
Contingent on?
The bids received.
Bids, bids received, and you, bids received, and you'll submit the lowest bid?
If the references check out, fine, yes.
So lowest responsible bidder?
Yes.
And how many bids do you have in now?
One.
You have one, and you're expecting three?
No, we're expecting, they, usually, everyone waits till the last day, we'll be flooded with them probably tomorrow, Thursday, tomorrow.
So more, you'll have more than, three?
Yes.
You're expecting?
Yeah, we expect one of the three, but it could be just three.
Okay. Or just two, I suppose.
Yeah.
Apparently, all we're authorized is for them to sign and file with E-Rate, the 471 form.
Correct.
And that's it.
Yeah.
You don't have to go any further than that.
Okay.
Basically, so we don't lose the benefit.
Right.
Right.
So I make that motion.
All right. Just repeat it for, again.
Okay, I move that we authorize the district administration to sign and file with E-Rate for, Form 471.
I'll second that motion. Monita, can you call the roll?
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Lisa Gainer.
Aye.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye. It's been passed that the, the board has authorized the administration to sign and file a 471, Form 471 with two E-Rate. Now, we're opening our floor to new business, and the first item would be Michael's report on the Technology Committee last meeting.
Sure. We, we met and probably came to conclusion that we have bid off more than we can chew in trying to put things out for a request, request for information or proposal, whatever you want to call it, due to the fact that we're short-staffed. Right now, we don't have a Director of Technology, or whatever we're going to call this position, and that for us to get a proper bid would require a lot of information and filling out forms and documentation, which would fall on Matt Alanius, who actually has a job working with the district and trying to keep our head above water. So in lieu of that, when we sat down and met, we identified the biggest problem we have right now, according to Matt, is our email system, is that it causes him the most time away from doing his job and requires an enormous amount of time. And so that's what we're trying to fix right now, is the email system. So we will be putting out a request for information, or request for RFP, going to Microsoft Outlook and hosting that. Once we hire our Director of Technology, or whatever position we're going to call that, that process will fall on him or her, once we hire that person. From there, we're moving into, I, I think I've had a lot of discussion and emails from, from all of you in regards to the type of person we're looking for in this position, to the point where our next item here will be discussing the job posting for, for that job and the requirements.
Mike, did you guys discuss the job description at all, what kind of qualifications they think this person should have, or?
Yeah, a, a little bit. I think it falls mostly on, you know, more IT, less instruction, because we're, you know, whoever this person we, we hire will be managing a lot of the infrastructure.
Did they give you any indications or any sample job descriptions that these committee members would recommend? I, you know, I don't know too much about IT certifications and trying to figure out what we need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
You guys meeting again?
Thinking about it. We'll see what's going to happen. I think I'll talk with Matt and Dr. Sharmel Lewis to see where we're at on the request for Microsoft Outlook, trying to get that up and running.
Regarding this job description that's here, I, in a drawing blank, did we discuss this, was it the last meeting or the meeting before that? My recognition was that in that discussion, I don't remember where we fell, that we were talking about, we have instructional technology people already, and that we wanted more of a strictly IT tech person. Do you, anybody remember where we fell on that? I don't think we fell. Okay, that's what I thought. It started. I think you asked for direction on where we were going, and we all agreed that we needed that position, and that's where we are in this number two.
Right, I, I was under the impression we gave direction, at least to the post of the position, not to make a hiring decision at all, or do any interviews, and that's where I believe we're at, that we're collecting resumes. But in lieu of our technology forum and meeting with our tech committee and emails and phone calls I've had with various board members, I think we need to revisit the qualifications of the job and the job descriptions of itself, and hopefully tonight, give that direction to our superintendent to proceed.
All right.
So we're moving off that into the discussion, right?
Into the next item on the agenda, which is the job description.
Into the next item on the agenda, which is the job description for the position, which is the Director of Technology position. And basically, we're asking for a full-time person who will be a direct hire, who will be an administrator, it's a director position, and will be a year-round, year-round employee. We're looking for a moderate level of experience, can you tell me what that might mean in terms of years of experience?
We talked, and before I answer that, I wanna share with you a little bit of the discussion to add to what Mr. O'Brien was saying about the job description and the type of person we're looking for. We definitely need someone where we are right now, that understands IT infrastructure. Because of the status of some of our equipment and the reports that have come back from our consultants saying, here are some issues that we need to address, we would like someone to come in and say, assess their, do their own assessment of the IT infrastructure, see if they agree with the recommendations that Client First and/or Net fifty-six and/or Line iCloud have made, and then create their own plan and their own vision of how they wanna move forward. But I also think they need to have an understanding of instructional technology, because you can't build the infrastructure without knowing where you want it to go. So, I feel that the, this person needs to be able to talk to instructional staff, understand what twenty-first century education looks like, maybe not write the curriculum or do it, but be able to speak with teachers, train teachers, and understand where teachers need to be going, and then making sure that infrastructure supports what the instruction's going to look like. So, for moderate, I would say somebody right now with, you know, four to six years of experience with infrastructure, but also an understanding of teaching and learning.
What kind of degree would this person have? I see, you know, it says significant experience, that's not really a measurable requirement. And I honestly don't know what an appropriate IT person should have, types of certifications or a type of degree. I would like to ask, well, we've got, not Client First, who do we have? Do we have Net fifty-six working with us now?
Mm-hmm.
Can we get some feedback from Net fifty-six as far as what kind of technological background should they have, and how would that look like? And I know that Adam Pope also offered a suggestion to help with the job description. I'll be happy to reach out to Adam if you want, to just get some ideas of what can we put in there that covers us to give us a measurable standard for, in, for qualifications? What kind of degrees, what kind of certification they should have, or endorsements, or other things from the IT world?
Specifically related to technology.
Specifically related to technology, right? That we need, that will help us get to where we need to, to help us make the evaluate all of this technology information that's been presented to us.
We could also put in, if you want to, right now, we have a general administrative, which is a Type seventy-five administrative certificate, so that would give you, you know, a director-level person, but we can also add a technology specialist person, a technology specialist, excuse me, endorsement.
To the job description.
Correct. To the qualification.
That's a, that's a Illinois State Educator endorsement? Okay.
So, they would have both your suggestions?
Type seventy-five and?
If you want someone with a more specific technology background.
Mike, I, I agree with what Rachel is saying, that I would be more, I'd be more concerned of looking at someone's IT qualifications more than on the education side. I mean, almost to the point, why, why do we need a Type seventy-five certificate as part of a job requirement?
Because I would like them to work with staff, once they get the infrastructure up and going. I want them to have that vision of what teaching and learning is gonna be looking like.
Do you need a Type seventy-five certificate to work with staff?
If they're gonna be supervising staff, and I think we should have that flexibility. If we're gonna grow this department.
So, anyone that supervises staff, has to have a Type seventy-five, and that's why it's in there?
Yes.
Why not having supervisory experience as an alternative? Because I think that as far as, I foresee this position being is that if they're directing IT staff, it's somebody, basically, you're looking for, I think we described, somebody to deal with whatever the vendor that's providing the service, and being able to deal with the staff, more as like a liaison between the two. I think that it would be, if we could get supervisory experience, we're gonna expand our job, our job, I'm sorry, applicant pool more, if we just give them, as opposed to having a very specific educator license, have somebody that has the supervisory experience, whether you say two to five years supervisory, demonstrated supervisory experience, I think we're gonna get a broader pool of what we need.
Is broader what we're gonna accomplish? Or specific what we need?
Broader, I think that the more you have, the more, the more applicants you have, more likely we're gonna get the better people. And I think, cause, you know, these, sometimes if you get too technical, you're gonna knock out too many people, and you're not, we're not gonna get great applicants.
Is it a state requirement, or some sort of requirement, that you can't supervise people in a?
You have to have a general administrative Type seventy-five.
Okay, you know, I never knew that, cause I mean, when I'm looking at, why do you need a Type seventy-five? My goodness.
It's a state requirement.
Ridiculous.
To supervise other teachers.
To supervise certified personnel.
Yeah.
But are they going to be supervising, have direct reports that are certified personnel?
No, but I would, I would like to have that flexibility, if we're gonna grow the department to the infrastructure to support instruction.
As I thought about this job description, I thought about it in two ways. I thought about it in a short-term and a long-term way, and maybe that's kinda how Bob is looking at it, too. In the short-term, I see this person having to deal with a lot of infrastructure and technology issues to get us where we need to go. But as we get those issues solved, and the, the infrastructure starts to work, the time that that person, in my mind, could, is spending on those issues becomes less. And I'd like to have a person in that role that's flexible, so they have the ability to move to a, to a different capacity, still managing the infrastructure, but then being able to address the academic piece. So, if you can figure out a job description that gets both of those in there somehow, then, you know, as you go down the road, you might not have to re-engineer the department, you got the person that can help you do that and shift that, shift, be able to use that, his or her skills to supervise teachers and link the two pieces together. And I don't know if that person exists, but I guess it's worth a try.
I think that person would exist.
Right.
I think that person would exist if they're not expected to manage the servers, to manage the malware, to look at the emails, I mean, and manage the help desk, and look at the phone system. I think if we go in the direction where we started, which is outsourcing, or looking at different vendors to provide a service, I think a technology director with supervisory experience can oversee that process and be able to communicate with whoever we're using to manage, whether it's an outsourced company, which I do believe, I think, is the way to go, because we're not gonna find someone who's an expert in everything, and then be able to communicate that to teachers and say, okay, now this infrastructure's working, now here's how I want you to use it in the classroom. I think if you get someone that has a vision for technology and knows what the infrastructure needs to look like to support instruction, I think this job description covers that.
I, I do recall that when we had our Technology Forum, I think maybe it was Adam Pope or some of the other people who were there, mentioned that a big part of these duties would be basically managing contracts and service level agreements, and I don't see that, and I did not see that in the job description at all.
Well, I don't, because we're not outsourcing yet. I mean, if you would like me to add that, right now, we don't have any.
Right, but I think ultimately, we, we will. Yeah, I mean, I think what Rachel said as far as trying to find somebody with the right certifications and, whatever, I like what you said, Bhavana, about they need to have the tech endorsement, but also what Rachel says as far as trying to have the proper IT certifications, and then adding on what Mary Rose said, that this person will meet you. I, I believe this board wants to go the outsourced direction, so whenever this, we hire this person, that the outsourcing will become more and more prevalent, and he or she would have to manage those contracts, and that probably should be it.
I think heavy, it might be heavy-duty negotiation with vendors, and I don't know how many vendors you'd have to deal with.
Well, it's gotta be supported by, with Zach, and, you know, because we're talking about financial implications.
Right.
So, there's gonna be a team along with our superintendent, so.
It is, but it's, the service, you know, again, I'm just throwing that out there, that's what I heard that day. And then the only other thing is, when I look at hiring a director level with four to six years of experience, that seems kinda light for that level. Again, I don't know the market, I don't know what you.
For that price point, that's probably what you're gonna get.
Really?
Well, let me, I say we go back and let's talk to the gentleman from Line iCloud, I'm drawing a blanket, his name.
Jim Peterson.
Yes, I was looking for, actually, the day after he spoke, I was looking for his job description online, I couldn't find it. I'd like to see what he would have to say, his input, and I'd like Adam's input.
He probably wrote his own job description. That guy is not, you don't find him in every district.
Take the current job description we have, and have them look at it, and.
That's my.
Yes.
Well, why don't you work with Mr. Pope?
You know, contact Jim and just say, does this jibe, you know, with what you think our job description should be? And I think we add Mary Rose's managing vendor, you know, contracts, cause I think that's where we wanna go.
And I don't support taking out the piece that they have some relationship with the education side.
I, I agree.
I agree with that.
I'm not saying it's, that's, I think it's important, because I think that that makes that relationship whole. I mean, we want that person to have a vision and be able to drive both sides of that.
I see that as a backup plan. I mean, if we can't get someone with some educational background, along with the instruction, then we have to maybe call back and say, okay, let's just focus on our short-term need on infrastructure, technology infrastructure. But that's, to me, that's a secondary plan.
Well, building onto that, why not, what we could do is, cause I just, I'm looking at all of these performance responsibilities, and if you go through the long list of almost, you know, three pages, it's, there's a very small portion that's actually curriculum-based, and it's the train and directing staff on the effective use of instructional technology, but there's, if you read it, the curriculum's a very small piece in that. I would suggest that making the educational bit a preferred qualification, so that when the administration is screening the applications for the IT stuff, they're looking with an eye towards those who have the education background, whether it be in a school, because there may be somebody who has, doesn't have these endorsements, but they have the background of working with teachers and staff in school settings.
Can, can somebody explain to me the Type seventy-five endorsement, what's involved with getting it, and I don't know a lot about it?
It's what our principals have, it's what our directors have, it's what I have, and it's anybody that supervises certified staff. So, it's what's required.
It's certified staff, cause Zach, you don't, do you have a Type seventy-five?
No, in the process.
Right, but certified staff does not report to you. Now, with this Type seventy-five, I mean, I'll be the first to know, well, we don't have a Type seventy-five, shows you what I know, is that the Director of Technology, would they not, who would report, what certified staff would report to Director of Technology?
Or to technology specialists?
Correct, which hence, we need that Type seventy-five, and there's no way around. As much as we, well, would like to lower that requirement, we can't, because two certified people would report to that person, thus they need the Type seventy-five.
And our three, currently, our three library media specialists.
Ah, that's true. That's true. So, there's no way around it.
I would just, still would like to know what's involved with getting a Type seventy-five?
Why don't we have, why don't we have a separate conversation, I mean, cause it's, there's a lot involved.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's, it's a.
Let's talk about, I think it's important right now, I mean, is it, is it a one or two-year?
It's a two-year, it's a two-year degree program.
Okay, all right, that.
And then you get your certificate at the end.
And what type of institutions you go to for this endorsement?
I got mine from UIC.
Okay, so.
Which yours from, Brian.
All right, so it's a regular college curriculum, it takes generally two years, and, okay.
This could be done part-time while someone is working full-time?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Case in point, Zach.
Yeah. I would just, I would just echo Rachel and your initial comment about Type seventy-five. I think it's, it's limiting the pool of applicants that we're getting. I just would want the best person, that, someone perhaps at a private school, or a university, or at a not-for-profit, a private company that does not have a seventy-five, would not put their toe in the water. And so, I think we, we would effectively limit our number of applicants and the quality of applicants as well.
Yeah.
Just, I just kinda wanna at least share my thoughts on, so when I was speaking earlier, I made a comment about, I use Common Core, Common Core has anchor standards in ELA, and they're all built on each other, so there are these anchor standards that are actually addressed in every single grade level from kindergarten through twelfth grade, okay? They're the general standards, and the higher grade level standards. Those are the skills that, you know, our students must, must master by the time to be college and career ready, okay? Those are the anchor standards. What I envision, you know, with our twenty-one T cubed committee and, and the CCAT committees is like, right now, we're redesigning our curriculum for LRC, for ELA math. On top of that now, our twenty-one T cubed committee is now infusing twenty-first century standards and skills into that curriculum, so that we are going to be able to provide a challenging and enhancing curriculum for each and every child, and that technology piece is going to enhance that. So, no matter what level you are learning at, right, the anchor standards are the same, but the level at which you're, you're doing it might be a little bit different, and the technology, for example, is going to enhance that. We have a grade level standards as well, we use the technology to support that, too, but there's, and the reason I'm trying to explain this way is because there's a bigger vision in, in what we're trying to do with instruction. And I see myself working very closely with this director, talking about our needs, what we need, getting some feedback on the director's needs, our director's thoughts, and I think it'd be very difficult if, if the director didn't have at least some educational background, because they bring that, the technology piece to a different level, and to be able to have conversations and lead groups or committees on not only how are we gonna get there, but to collaborate on what else is out there, what other opportunities are out there, what, what is the best way to get there, and to bring somebody who doesn't have that knowledge, and I'm not saying this is the number one thing, but doesn't have that knowledge or that practice, or couldn't go in and work with teachers to a certain level to just support them. I, I think that, that may be something in the long run, that we're going to say, wow, we could've gotten more from this position. I really do, and, and we could've, we could be even, even, even more aligned and have a more rigorous curriculum, because everybody is on the same page, and everybody has kind of understanding of what we're in, what we need.
And if I may add, if we're going to outsource, which is what I'm hearing, what Michael just said, if that is the direction that you wanna go, I'm not sure how important it is to have somebody with a Microsoft certification, because if you're gonna outsource, the company that you're gonna use has all those certifications and those endorsements. That person needs to be able to oversee and manage and have a working relationship with those vendors, not necessarily have the specific, and I don't know what they are, we can look for.
Well, I was gonna caution against the, I'd be interested to get feedback from the community about what those technology certifications might be relevant, but having been in IT, it's an alphabet soup of all these different technologies, and they don't, all these certifications don't always age well, because, let's say I'm certified on Microsoft Outlook, you know, or Microsoft Exchange two thousand and two, I mean, that's, you know, twelve years old, and it's useless now, so.
You'd have to sort through which ones are actually relevant and helpful.
Right, so I just caution against it, I'm not saying that isn't a good idea, or be a nice-to-have or desired preferred, preferred qualification. The other thing about degrees is funny, because I have a music degree, and I've been in IT now for fifteen years, so I would not get this job, so, that's fine.
Well, I lose sight of what, what Dr. Gannon is saying, is the relevancy, the relevancy to what? The relevancy to educational curriculum needs and everything like that, so, I mean, that should be our priority, is that relevance, beyond anything else.
Okay, but let's just look at this, okay? I came in to say, hey, let's get rid of the Type seventy-five, get a broader pool of candidates. We can't, because we have certified staff reporting to that, to that person. We can't do it unless we, I don't wanna go down that road. That Type seventy-five requirement needs to stay on there, and has to, because people are reporting that person. So, if you have to require a Type seventy-five, what person with a Type seventy-five isn't gonna have an education background? You think some guy, like artist, designer? You think some guy, like artist decides to go get a.
A 5 degree just because.
I have a teaching certificate.
So I, I, I think we're going, going around. I know this thing keeps popping up. I think the way forward is to have Rachel talk with Mr. Pope. I'll talk with Jim Peterson, give him our job description. Good, good. Give it to Bobna, post it, or repost whatever, and start the hiring process, because now all of a sudden we're behind the eight ball.
So can I ask, have we, have we been gathering some resumes up till now? Okay, and can I ask, how many do we have?
Last time I looked, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had about 60?
60.
With varying degrees of experience.
Yeah.
You know, some of them are right out of school, or just got their type 75, have a tech passion. And some people have been in a director role that's more heavily infrastructure, and some have more heavily instructional.
And some have none.
And, and do they, do they all have, do they all have a type 75?
Yes.
What 20 will do it.
They all have a type 75. Could we consider interviewing someone without a type 75? And perhaps stating as a condition of hire that they get it within one or two years?
Sounds like two.
Two years? Well, I mean, they may already be working on it. Yeah, right. I mean, I.
Isn't the first step to get the job description down?
Well, the job description right now specifies.
Right, but we're, we're evolved, that's evolving now, because of all the discussions we've had, right?
Well, let's find out what, because we definitely need somebody with a technology experience. Let's find out what credentials they need. Let's find out, and let's just throw it out there. I mean, the worst that's going to happen is we post it, and we get two people and say, okay, this is not working.
Oh, and we have 60 candidates that we can, we can match up against.
But not with a revised job description with specific requirements based upon getting feedback from Jim Peterson or from Mr. Pope.
Yeah, I do think mentioning the SLA is pretty important.
The what?
The service level agreements.
The vendor management. I do agree, that's key.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Just something to think about, too.
Some might have it.
So, so is this, is this true? It's a, it's a, it's a drop dead situation? You, you have to have a type 75?
Well, let's try. Let's just try.
Two, two supervised certified staff.
You have to have a type 75.
Is this state law or what? I mean, because we're finding out in other cases where there's state law, but we really don't need to follow it, because there's ways around, you know. So I'm just wondering, you know, if this is, if, is this rock solid? Or is this a recommendation?
It's rock solid.
It's rock solid.
Rock solid, okay.
I learned something about type 75 today.
Yeah, you sure did.
75, definite.
I'm going, I'm getting my type 75.
You got two years.
Job opportunity.
And I should clarify that to get a type 75, you have to have a minimum of two years' teaching experience.
Nah. Teach on University of Phoenix.
Yeah, you, you're working on it.
We got, we got the next steps, right?
All right, I just want to repeat what they are, that Rachel is going to talk with Aiden and Mike is going to talk with Jim Peterson and just get some feedback and.
Mike and I will collaborate and, because I won't be here in April, I'll talk to somebody to. Yes.
Go to Bobna, we update the job description, boom, we got already 60 in the queue.
Go talk to a guy.
See if anyone meet that, and then we can proceed going forward.
And you might have a date where you might be able to, you know, get that feedback to Bobna?
I think hopefully within a week.
So that she can basically move based on?
And move, because, you know what, we keep, okay, got it, and then, no, 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 wait, I think we're done.
The market's there.
We're, we're not even quite close right now. I mean, just based on our discussion tonight.
We might be.
I mean, with your, but your, your comment was, was taken well, I mean, about the managing.
Yeah, but that's just a line.
And that was, that was, that was not in there. I mean, so it's very important that it be added.
I mean, I think we can just add a line here. You know, develops and implements policies and guidelines for district hardware, software, and network purchases. There's two bullets right now. We can say, third bullet, manage vendor relationships and service level agreements. It can go, it falls very nicely right in there.
Would you also add that into the interview process when we?
Yeah, but you can probe for it. You can probe for it, but in the meantime, Rachel and Mike will, you know, get a little bit more feedback. And, but yeah, I don't think we can wait a month, that's for sure. I, you know, I don't think, I don't think we have to.
And I would like to, you know, if it's okay, you know, once I get the job descriptions back. We do have some good candidates that are screening. We can always adjust our interviewing process to target those questions that deal with the job description. But I would like to start interviewing in the next couple of weeks of April, because then if we're looking at interviewing and then going to a finalist and looking at reference checks, we're looking at a May approval to get this person to start in July. And good people are, as we know, leaving. And we're in the process right now of doing principals and directors. And we're finding that, for example, with one of the principalships, they accepted the position before they even got to our final interview, within a week. So we do need to move rather quickly if we want quality people.
John?
All right, moving on.
All right, moving on. I guess the final item on our agenda here is, or is it, is the security cameras. Bobna, you're up.
We included for you the quotes for the security cameras. And we'd just like some direction on where would you like to go with it? Because as you can see, there are significant costs. We have one quote coming in at $62,167 and another quote at $49,900. And as we talked earlier, this was not included in our budget for this year, or it was not included in our guiding principles as a priority area for financial or operational excellence. I do understand it's a need, I understand the importance of it. I just want to get some direction on the next steps from the board.
Can I just add something before? We also were requested to find out the cost of having the door chimes go to the offices. That would, for all buildings, that would be an additional $5,800.
Total?
Six thousand nine.
Not each building, total.
Total for each, for all the buildings.
So just add 500.
About six grand.
Right, and that would, anytime any door opens, the chime would go on the monitor.
But you have to add the security cameras to get the chimes, you can't add the chime, I mean, it's a package deal. Package deal.
I requested the, this, and this was in light of the student that walked out through a, I guess it was a, a door that did not have one of these cameras? Am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So it was in response to that. And I think as procedures and protocols evolve on school building safety and security, I think presently we're behind the curve on that. I think we've got some catching up to do. I would, I would say that controlled access, we're, we're dealing with that, but we, we got a little bit of a scattergun approach by having some of these doors with no cameras, no alarms. And I would just think for, whether it's $62,000 or $50,000, that it's, would be money very well spent. And that we could, though it's not on the guiding principles and it's not in the budget, I would hope that we could find a way to, to fund this.
Wasn't, we had talked earlier, well, last week, I guess, but about whether we need more extensive work? Perhaps, and to kind of, if you could kind of expound on that.
Sure, David, Zach, Lisa and I have interviewed architects, and we're looking at summarizing that for doing, possibly not having an architect of record, but looking more at somebody just doing a five-year life safety review, and then presenting that to the board. We haven't picked a vendor, we were just going to bring that idea to you. But one of the things we talked about is doing a security analysis within that five-year life safety review. And then if that's an area of priority, then the board could budget it, whether it's a year one, year two, year three. I didn't, my recommendation would be not to re, I understand, Randy, this is very important. I just don't want to put these cameras in place, but then say, okay, we don't have the infrastructure to support it or the procedures to support it. If we have a full analysis done with that five-year review, then they would help us understand, here's what you would need to do, how you need to do it, who would be responsible for it, here's the technology, you need to support that. I just would like to have a more comprehensive approach.
I, I understand from talking to Matt that we do have the infrastructure to support it. We, we do have the, the, the capacity and the technology in our server rooms. It's, it's a matter of adding on to what, what we've got now, okay? We've got cameras working in all of the buildings, but we don't have cameras at all of the doors, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Let me speak to this for a minute, because I want to talk about, we deal with cameras a lot in the county in what we do. And, you know, if cameras don't solve the problem, because what happens is, if you don't have somebody, first of all, strategically planning on where the cameras are going to go, then that's the first problem. You got to figure out where do you really need them, that you're going to get most, not necessarily bang for your buck, that's not the right word.
Well, we want them at the doors.
Well, no, 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 I understand that. But the problem is, is that it's like you have to figure out what's the right way to man them. Because let me tell you how many things are actually happening in front of the cameras, and nobody's watching the footage. And that, I mean, how much.
Yeah, the doing.
So that's, yeah, I mean, it's, we just need to figure out, I'd like to, I think it's important, but I think we need to look at overall, I hate to do this piecemeal. If we're going to put in cameras, we got to figure out the plan of who's going to be watching this and how frequently. And, and you got to have specific protocols in place for that. And so I, I think, like, I'm all about the cameras, but we got to make sure we do it right.
I, I just don't, I just don't see any reason to delay and do a $200,000 study or something that's going to take a year or two to work into the budget. I mean, following that, that walkout that we had six or eight weeks ago, I mean, I think it's time that we, we reckon with this. And I think we're behind the curve, like I said.
I agree with Rachel and Bobna, I think we need a big picture plan. And I also think if we're going to think about it, it needs to go into the budget process that we're working on. For, even if we're going to attempt to do it next year, we need to put it in Zach's process. He's accumulating from everyone their needs and what they need. And I think that should be part of that discussion, and it should come back to us as a budgetary discussion as well as a strategic discussion. And my question is, is can we levy for this under the life safety?
Yes.
Yes, we can, okay.
The only problem with that is it'll be in the second half of the year.
The second half?
Of next year.
Okay. But either which way, we could specifically levy for, towards that.
Good question.
To you.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, and how much do you think this analysis would be in addition to the five-year camera plan? Are you able to estimate that?
That's, I don't have that. I was just thinking, we can include that, because in light of the recent, bringing this up to our attention, we can include that, say, in a five-year study. Could you also do a safety and security analysis and work with our police department to do that?
Yeah, I think that's, it's just, it's critical that we do have that analysis and everything. Because we can't keep on just reacting and spending money when certain events happen. We, we really have to, to be physically responsible. We need to be planning these things out and having a full technical analysis of where, you know, where's our strengths, where's our weaknesses?
Maybe there's a system.
And do it in a budget, budgetary way. A what?
Maybe there's a system that hooks into it.
So Rachel, back to your, back to your comments. I would just say that we've, we've got cameras, or we have monitors in the, in the offices, in each of the administrators are, in the offices of each of the schools, okay? And we, presently, we might have two or three cameras focused on doors. So we have, at most schools, we have four or five additional doors that are at each school that are not being watched, okay? So all this would do would be to, for $60,000 or $50,000, would put a camera in each of those doors where they're absent. There would be additional, an additional image on the monitor. And with this $6,000, this, this, or this audio alert, there would be, if, if the door would be opened at an inappropriate time, there would be a noise that would alert the staff person in the office to look up at the monitor. So that's, that's all we're talking about. So it's, we're not talking about hiring new staff. We're not talking about hiring a new security person. For, for what's happening in this world, I don't know. I would, I guess I would have to look, look to you, Bobna. You're our chief executive officer. You probably know what's happening in other school districts when it comes to security. Have, are we doing enough?
I can tell you what we've done in my previous district. We put security cameras in, but it wasn't piecemealed in. There was a plan in place, we worked with the architect, they put it in, they worked with our technology infrastructure team, so everything tied together. And then there was a system of a 30-day backup, who looked at it, it was facing a certain way. I mean, it was all mapped out and strategically done. It wasn't, let's buy cameras, let's put them up because of one situation. Do I agree that it's important? Absolutely, I just think we need to be thoughtful and strategic about it.
Bobna, just a, just a real quick question. Is there anything we can do that's sort of immediately that is a lot less expensive than this to improve security? Are there any ideas along that line?
I think we shared with you that a couple of months ago, that Matt went through, and everything is in working order. So we have that one camera and one monitor at the front door. So that is working, and we can see footage of that. So we do have the one camera, am I correct on that, Zach? Yep, so all cameras at the front door facing the school offices, as Randy said, those are all in working order. These are addition to that we were asked to provide you.
Are the walkie-talkies, how are they being implemented? I don't, or to assist? I mean, that's part of what we're doing in the interim.
They currently were at every elementary school, and we just implemented them at Hauser. So the elementary schools have always had them, Hauser did not, but we implemented them this year based on that situation.
I had a question about the life safety survey. We, there was a five-year, I don't know if it was a five-year or a 10-year or a two-decade life safety survey done. And I know that some of the items on that list didn't get finished until the construction projects at all five schools. Do we, anybody remember how long ago, I mean, what the age of that study was?
I mean, I recall it, but I'm not sure what the date.
It's from a while ago, right? So doing it, doing it now again is probably a great idea, right?
Right.
I mean.
I think after the construction, it all has to be updated regardless, huh?
I was saying that there was a study done, and over the years, there had been specific projects to do specific things. And I, my recollection was that we didn't cross everything of the list off that was in the must-do list, even until we did the remodeling projects, so.
I think that's something that we've been discussing and talking about, doing this analysis, is that we will have a more, a more robust reporting system that we can keep up, monitor, and then have, actually have reports that could be posted on to our website that will say, kind of, what's our capital planning, you know, for the next five, 10 years, whatever? And say, this is what we're, and this is how we're, this is the money that's in our fund balance, this is what we're looking to pay, how we're going to spend it.
Well, there's life safety as one thing, and then there's just capital improvement.
Right, 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 but it all.
Falls outside of that, which you can't even get to until you get to the life safety, which, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you know, pick and choose.
Yeah, you have to, you know, pick and choose strategically on how you hit, and you can't meet all the life safety needs all at once.
That process has been going on, it's just, we probably do a better job of having a process.
Yeah, there's always going to be something new that's going to pop up.
Should do a five-year plan, and then have an annual update to that plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, how can we summarize this? Is there any more comments? How can we summarize this conversation?
I mean, I would move that we wrap this up into our overall, you know, life safety analysis. That's my, that's what I would move.
And do you want to go around the table and ask agreement with David's statement? David, you agreed with your statement?
I'd be scared of being right.
Well, you know, we've changed our mind around here. We've changed our mind within a minute.
We all have. I agree with David's statement. We need to have this planned, and then we need to put it into place in regards to all of the capital, life safety, the whole, security, whole thing. Rachel?
I would like to see the plan. My question would be about how long, where are we, I don't even know where we are in the architect hiring process.
There will be an update coming, and this is part of that, so.
Okay, and next?
I don't know where we're planning on putting it, putting it on the next finance committee meeting, or the next general meeting. So I think that one needs to be communicated out to the board.
We're going to meet, I sent you some dates to meet.
But definitely time is, it's time sensitive.
Right.
You know, we've got to start moving forward, we got to get our game plan in place here, and communicate it to, not only to the rest of the board, but to the public.
Right. I thought we were going to.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, you know.
All right, I agree with David, and Lisa, and Rachel.
I agree. I would disagree, of course, and I would just say that the life safety plan is usually done by an architect, is that correct? And I would just want to make sure that any architect that we would retain would have expertise and, and state-of-the-art expertise in school security.
Or we could contract that out.
Well, there are, there are architects, in fact, the one at the high school has a specific expertise to, specifically, I think, life safety in schools. So I don't know what, who we're currently looking at now, but I would be interested to know what their experience is relative to that.
So.
But just that alone may not qualify, we may not find, I mean, definitely we'll look into, you know, that's going to be a different consideration.
You have to have an architect to have a life safety plan.
And to do a life safety plan for this century, you need someone that's good with security as well. I agree.
Okay.
Hi.
All righty.
David.
We're deferring this for a bigger plan. All right, like a motion to adjourn to?
What, to adjourn to meetings?
Oh, all right, I'll announce them. April 1st for the Education Committee, 7:00 p.m. April 15th, Policy Committee Meeting. April 15th, a regular business meeting, and May 6th, the next Finance Committee Meeting. All here at Learning Center here at Hauser. All right, now, may, if there's no further discussion or announcements, may I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
For the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Second.
Roll call.
Randy Brockley.
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Mia Rose Mandia.
Aye.
All right, moving to adjourn to closed.